...with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Good evening. We're getting some, we're getting some static. I'm not sure where that's coming from. Anyway, good evening and welcome to the 1,910th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting. Minutes of this meeting at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held Monday, December 14th, 2020, and I will note that unbelievably, that will be our last meeting of this year. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Jolly? And give your location.
Oh, thank you.
President, Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember Toy?
Here. 32604 Rayburn, Livonia, Michigan.
Vice President Barr?
Here in Livonia, Michigan.
Councilmember White?
President, Beehive Acres, Florida.
Councilmember McCullough?
President, Livonia, Michigan.
President McIntyre?
Present and in Livonia, Michigan at City Hall. So if I do my math correctly, the only one not with us yet, is that correct, is Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes, Vice President Barr.
Just, you know, he texted me about 10 minutes ago, said he intends to be with us, but he's having some connection issues. He'll be, join us as soon as he can.
Thank you very much, Vice President Barr. At this time, we will have the presentation of the minutes of the 1,909th regular meeting of the city that was held on November 16th, 2020. Council.
Of approval?
I'll second that.
Support by Councilmember Jolly. Any comments, corrections to be offered?
I didn't hear who moved it, I'm sorry.
Uh, Barr. All right. If there are no, no corrections or comments. Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes from November 16th, 2020?
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
President McIntyre?
Approved. And the, the minutes are approved by all six members of the council who are presently with us. I would like to go to the council at this time, if anyone on the council has any announcements. They, they would like to make Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. As the council's representative on the retirement board, it's my pleasure to wish a happy retirement and congratulate police officer, senior police officer, Richard Ostrowski, who has served 23 years with the Livonia Police Department. We wish Officer Ostrowski well and thank him for his service. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jolly. Does anyone else from the council have any announcements, tributes, or recognitions they'd like to offer? Oh, and I see now, Madam Clerk, that Councilmember Donovan has been able to join us. I have just a few things to offer. First of all, we have new data on item number 13, and I will refer to that new data in more detail when we reach that item. And would also like to take this opportunity to wish our former mayor and good friend to all of us, Mayor Dennis Wright, a very happy birthday on the 13th of December. So, happy birthday, former mayor Wright. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce the department heads who are with us this evening. And again, it's, I have to kind of juggle around here to do this. So the, the people that are, that I can see immediately on the screen are, and again, these are just in the order in which people appear, our city clerk, Susan Nash, our assistant city attorney, Mr. David Lear, is representing our city attorney, Mr. Todd Zalinsik, our director of economic development and planning, Mark Teramina, our city attorney, Mr. Paul Bernier, our director of governmental affairs, Ms. LaShawn Thomas, our council office manager and administrator, Sarah Kasperwich, our IT director, information services director, Mr. Casey O'Neil. And I am not able right now to see the panelists. So Vice President Barr, if you're able to see the panelists, could you, never mind. Mine just popped up, sorry about that. We also have Jacob Rushlow, our deputy superintendent of Public Works, our city treasurer, Linda Shield, and our director of Parks and Recreation, Community Resources, Mr. Ted Davis. We also see that we have former councilmember Brandon Pressman with us this evening. Yes, good evening, former councilman. And with that, I, I go to my announcements. I don't have any other than the ones I just mentioned, other than, I guess, to, to wish Livonians, or maybe not wish, but extend our hopes that everyone had a nice Thanksgiving and a nice holiday weekend. It was different from any other Thanksgiving weekend, but I hope that everyone enjoyed themselves. And I, Mr. Davis, I'm, I'm going to ask you if you would maybe like to give us a little, and I know I'm putting you on the spot here, but a little preview of what's going on this, this weekend. Our normal holiday plans are, are a little bit changed up this year. And if you're there, Mr. Davis, and you wouldn't mind, and my apologies for putting you on the spot, but it just occurred to me that this weekend is the first weekend in December and we'll be having our event. So, Mr. Davis, and I'll introduce you, and I did before, but our director of Parks, Recreation, and Community Resources, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, President McIntyre. And yes, thank you for putting me on the spot. Yes, it is the first weekend in December. Normally, we'd be gearing up for our holiday parade, which has become an annual tradition here. Fortunately, with current health and human services guidelines, we are not going to be able to do that. We have some events going on, though, in other areas. We will be doing a holiday event that is already sold out at Greenmead during the daytime on Saturday. We also have Greenmead events in the evening, Night of Lights. And again, that'll be at Greenmead Historical Park, where you can take pictures and meet Santa. We're partnering with the Chamber of Commerce on that. That will be in the evening from 5 until 8, the December 5th, December 6th, December 12th, December 13th, 19th, and the 20th. So we do have some outdoor events going on. Obviously, not our normal year, but opportunities to get out, hopefully with some mild weather, enjoy some holiday lights, and then, you know, meet the big guy maybe, and ask if you've been a good boy or girl this year, what you are going to get for Christmas, what you'd like to receive for Christmas. So, we also do have Light Up Livonia, and that's thanks to Councilman Jolly and Councilman McCullough. We're doing a contest around the entire community for homeowners and businesses to participate, decorate your house. We'll have an interactive map available, GIS map available for everyone. If you'd like to register your home or business, you can do that at Parks and Recreation website for more information on that.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you for being a good sport. And I did put you on the spot, but again, it kind of crept up on us that this weekend is the weekend. So thank you very much. At this time, we go to our first section of audience communication at the beginning of the meeting. I'm going to ask our city council parliamentarian, Kelly White, if, if she would please, if she would please read our rules for audience communication, as she, as she does at every regular meeting. Good evening again, parliamentarian and councilmember White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rules are as follows. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak unless they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name, and if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings where citizens may address the council. There will also be an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for future consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communications portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make reasonable, or, I'm sorry, responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. And at this time, it's 7:12. We set aside 30 minutes for audience communication, this portion of the meeting. And I see that we have already two people that would like to address us. And just a reminder that you'll be asked to give us your name and your address, please. And we'll begin with Connie Dickey.
Good evening. I'm Connie Dickey, I live on Rayburn.
Okay.
And I just wanted to, last time we met, we talked about the leaf pickup and, and issues that we might have with the excessive cars on our street.
Yes.
Well, our street was due to be picked up on Monday.
Okay.
This week. We had the excessive cars. I called DPW and said, explained the issue. They called the police department. And the police department did show up out here, but they just did a drive-by. So then I returned, called the police department, and then asked why they didn't stop. They said there was no city ordinance that they could park on the leaves. And I said, I get that, but it's pickup. And for two years in a row, we missed our pickup because they were on the leaves. And we had three trucks out front. Major backup, and the cars, the, from, all in front of Planned Parenthood is not picked up. And this happens every year. The police department suggested we call DPW and say, can you come back another day? I felt that was wrong. They're busy enough. You had a snowstorm coming. So we just wanted to share, our frustration continues. And I get that if it was our car in the street and leaves were under it, we'd be responsible. But we're not choosing to have these cars out there. And it did cause some issues, and there are still leaves out there. That's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dickey, I, I know that Councilmember Jolly would like to address you. I'd also, before I go to Mr. Jolly, I'd just like to say I'm sorry for the inconvenience. The, the police department did correctly note that there is no ordinance that prohibits the parking of cars on, on leaves. As long as the cars were parked legally, there's, the, the police department does not have the authority to take any action with regards to enforcement or requiring residents to move their cars. So, and as you know, I, well, I don't know if you do know, but the Traffic Commission met, I've now lost track, I don't know if it was last month or the month before, talking about the issue of cars parked on Rayburn adjacent to or near the Planned Parenthood clinic, and the, the issue of signage and not allowing parked cars there was tabled. So I'm sorry for the inconvenience, but there are, there are not any ordinances. And, you know, I, I would say that DPW would be the, the appropriate route of response. I know Mr. Jolly wants to address your concern. And also, Ms. Thomas, who is our director of governmental affairs, our liaison from the council on council issues back to the city, is on the call tonight, as she is, participates in every meeting, and I'm sure that she will be raising this issue back to the administration as an area of concern. Councilmember Jolly?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Dickey, for bringing this to our attention. The city does have a snow emergency ordinance that allows the police to ticket vehicles in the roadway during snow emergencies. That is to facilitate situations where the DPW is working to clear the streets of snow. I would like to make a recommendation, or request, rather, to the Department of Law that we look at doing a similar ordinance for the leaf pickup. That this be something that can be a ticketable offense. Snow emergency tickets, I believe, if paid within 24 hours are $50. And $100 after that, I think it's absolutely appropriate for city functioning and efficiency that we would have a similar ordinance for leaf pickup, because it does create problems when cars are left in the street, not only for the residents who live there, but additional cost to the taxpayer when DPW workers have to go back and do the job a second time. Thank you.
So are you making a motion, Mr. Jolly?
I am, Madam President.
All right, do we have support? Is it, Councilmember Toy, are you supporting?
Yes, and I would like to ask for the floor when you get done.
Mr. Jolly?
Yes, ma'am.
Before?
That's it, my internet's a little shaky, so I apologize.
No problem, thank you. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It brings to light too, perhaps, I don't mean to make this go way beyond the scope of things, but perhaps if you had a garbage day as well, and cars were parked in the streets in front of your garbage cans and things like that, we might want to take a look at that as well. I don't know if that's too outlandish, Madam Chair, but it might be appropriate, because it's frustrating, you know, when you have your garbage picked up once a week, and they do a fabulous job. But if cars are blocking, and somebody's having a block party or whatever, you know, it could become a problem. Food for not, you know, no pun intended, I'm a garbage food supplier.
Okay.
Madam President, I, I apologize. I don't know that anybody seconded my motion to refer this.
Well, I, that, I'm sorry, Councilmember Jolly, that's what I asked to clarify if Councilmember Toy was seconding, and she indicated she was. Maybe correct.
Yeah, I would just like to restrict the leaf pickup. I appreciate what she's saying, but I, I don't really want to get into restricting parking on garbage days.
So at this time, we have a, a, a motion by Mr. Jolly to refer this to law, to look at developing an ordinance. We have a support, we have support from Councilmember Toy. And the council would like to address this issue.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President Barr, please.
Actually, I was getting ready to say something in response to that, and then I actually think Councilwoman Toy's suggestion, while I understand where it's coming from, I think illustrates my concern about the initial suggestion. If we're talking about not allowing cars on streets during leaf pickup, we're talking about, in many cases, three weeks at a time, not allowing cars on streets. At least on my street, that's the case. It's usually about a three-week lead-up that there's leaves out there. So, well, I appreciate the intent. I don't think that'd be a good idea, and I, I wouldn't support that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
Madam President, if I may, I would, I'm sorry. I would just like to see what law would come up with in regards to this. This is not voting on any ordinance. I'd just like to refer to them to see if there's a, a way to craft something that would be effective. That's the intent.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right, if there's nothing else on this item, we will move on. And thank you, Ms. Dickey, for the call, and, Councilmember?
We need to vote on that.
Oh, thank you. We, we need to take the, the vote on referring this to law to develop an, an ordinance, some language. Ms. Nash, our city clerk, could you please take the vote?
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
No.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
No. So that's four, is that correct? Four?
Yes.
Four affirmative votes, and the motion carries, so this will be referred to law for the development of an ordinance. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Dickey, for the call, bringing this to, to attention. You've heard this, it's been referred to law, and Ms. Thomas is also, I know, has this on her radar. Thank you. All right, and next we will go to Deena. I don't see the rest of Deena's name. Good evening, Deena.
Good evening, thank you for taking my call. I also live on Rayburn. My name is Deena Hallis. I kind of wanted to follow up to what Connie said with the leaves. You know, when they're out here trying to do their job, and you have cars parked all over the leaves, it makes it hard for the city workers. It also makes it hard for us when we're out here, you know, doing our leaves and trying to pick up as much as we can, and, you know, they're not able to do their jobs. We're not asking for them to completely just stay off of our street, but at the same time, you know, maybe if a police officer could just ask them just to move their car for no more than five minutes, just for them to do the job that they're here to do. And then I also wanted to follow up with Mr. Burner to see if any movement was happening with our noise ordinance that does come from Planned Parenthood.
Ms., Ms. Hallis? I will, I, things should be addressed, things should be addressed to the council, but I will, I will ask Mr. Burnier if he has anything that he'd like to hear to comment on. But this is a time for you to communicate with the council, not to ask department heads. Mr. Burnier, I don't know if you wish to comment?
In short, it's, it's, as I've said before, it's a difficult subject. We're looking into it. I know the county, the Parking Commission is working on the sign ordinance or the parking there. I don't know if that'll help resolve part of the problem or not. Bottom line is, we are, we are looking at it, but every, every time we look at something, we find somewhere else that has shot down a city ordinance. And it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation when you talk about first amendment right. We're still looking at it, but we haven't, we haven't had the kind of success that I'm sure the neighbors would like us to have.
Thank you, Mr. Burnier. And Ms. Hallis, I, you know, I, I'd just like to thank Mr. Burnier for answering the question. And I'd also encourage you, if you have other questions, you can always reach out to us to by phone, by email. But I, Mr. Burnier was able to provide an update, so.
Thank you. Nope, that should be it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for taking the time to call this evening. And I don't see anyone else who wishes to address the council during audience communication. Only one's going twice. All right, we'll close out this portion of audience communication. And at this time, excuse me. We do have, we do have a Communication Department of Finance dated November 9th, 2020, regarding various financial statements of the city of Livonia for the month ending September 30th, 2020. And we'd like to respectfully suggest this item simply be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And at this time, we go on, we continue with our consent agenda. And tonight, these are items, these are items 1 through 10. They, they were not, they're voted on as one item. It does not mean that they are any less important than any of the other items on this evening's agenda, but that during the, the study meeting on November 16th, they were deemed not to be controversial in nature, and that's why they're offered for the consent agenda. Council? Councilmember McCullough?
I'll move for approval.
I'll second that.
Report from Councilmember Jolly. Would the clerk please take the vote on approval of the consent agenda?
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. At this time, we move ahead with our unfinished business, beginning with item number 11. And this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, is amended. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend Section 070, Chapter 2.36, aging to amend Section 040 of Chapter 2.40, Arts Commission, 0.40 of Chapter 2.44, the Commission on Children and Youth, Section 020 of Chapter 2.52, the Historical Commission, Section 0.0 of Chapter 2.56, and the Historic Preservation Commission to reflect departmental changes. Council?
Madam President?
Aye.
I would like to offer first reading on this matter.
All right. And, Mr. Burnier, will you remind me, are we able to do this to cover, to cover each one of the, to, to cover these as one change, the ordinances? Sorry, you're on mute.
It was written that was as one change. I'm not sure the council's position, though, whether they're going to want to look at it differently for different departments. So it's, I think that's more of a, it can be done, but I'm not sure if council wants to do it that way. I'll kind of leave it up to council, yeah.
All right, so, Mr. Jolly, are you offering first read then for the, for the change comprehending all of these different departments?
My internet, I don't know if I'm, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. It's getting a little shaky here, so I apologize. I don't, I think we can do it all as one. I'm okay with that, with the first reading. I mean, this, these are all kind of in the same nature of changes, so I would be okay with proceeding with that.
Just, just to clarify, I was saying, it can be done in all one, I have no issue with it, but it could also be done separately, so that's really a council decision.
I'd like to proceed as one with, with my motion, my first read.
All right, so Councilmember Jolly has offered first read on the amendment of all these sections pertaining to, can't be seen Department of Law, pertaining to these different commissions. There's no discussion, then we will, we will continue to item number 12, agenda item number 12. This is a proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, number 543, as Department of Law. I'm sorry. Okay. Petition 2020-07-01-04 by Adams Park Development LLC to reserve properties located on the south side of Linden Avenue, East and Middle Belt Roads, 14416 Harrison Avenue, and 8201 Linden Avenue, former Adams Elementary School site, in the north, in the southeast corner of Section 24, from PL Public Plans to R11 Family Residential. And I'd just like to, sorry, never mind, that's the next item. We, I'll apologize in advance, we have a new system of producing agendas and council information that we're using in the city that's fantastic, but, and I just got to note that something's going on with my microphone, so I'll try to remedy that. Anyway, that is causing things to appear a little bit differently for us, so if, if there's more hesitation or confusion than usual in reading the agenda, that's why. Anyway, so item number 12, council. Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, I'd be happy to offer a first read on this.
All right, Councilmember McCullough has offered a first reading on this. And just to remind everyone who's listening and concerned about this issue, it is the council's practice that we, that we issue a first reading on the proposed rezoning, but we do not go to the second reading, which is where the vote is taken, until the site plan process has been, until the site process is completed with the city council. I'm sorry, the Planning Commission, until we see the site plan. All right, thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Moving on, item number 13, this is a petition, this comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding- Moving on, item number thirteen, this is a petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding petition twenty twenty dash zero eight dash zero one dash zero five submitted by Affinity Homes and Company, requesting to rezone the property at twenty eight four hundred West Chicago Avenue, the former Wilson Elementary School site, located on the north side of West Chicago Avenue between Harrison and Middle Belt Roads in the northwest quarter of section thirty-six from PL Public Plans to R one one Family Residential. The public hearing was held on, uh, November ninth, twenty twenty. And I'd like to, uh, I did mention we have new datum, new data on this item, and it is a communication received from the Department of Law regarding proposed order amendments with respect to this item. Like to request that be received and placed on file for the information of the council. Counsel?
Madam President?
Uh, was that, uh, Councilmember Donavick?
Yes. It'd be appropriate for a first reading, correct?
Yes. Yes.
I'd like to offer a first reading on the subject.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman, uh, Councilmember Donavick has offered first reading. And again, as noted, um, we won't, there will be not, no vote will be taken on the rezoning until the, um, petitioner has gone through the site plan process with the Planning Commission and, uh, until council has seen the site. Thank you. Item number fourteen is a request to extend waiver use approval to the new owner. Yankai Wan to operate a massage establishment. Amorph, oh, I, I had this right and now I'm struggling with it. Um, Amorphia Esthetics within the Burton Hollow Shopping Center located on the east side of Farmington Road between Six Mile Road and Curtis Avenue, one seven one four two Farmington Road and section tenants, council resolution three zero five dash one six. Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Madam President, um, I was just, obviously, we haven't, uh, going back to the study, I offered a denying resolution due to the lack of the information in the packet. Uh, I had, I was hoping to see some new information and unfortunately I have not. Um, I was wondering if petitioner, I don't see any.
Let me see. Yeah. Uh, it does not look like the petitioner is with us this evening. Councilmember McCullough?
I'll just, just going on the lack of information, this is something that normally I'm more than happy to look at, but I, I just feel the petitioner did not present enough information and, and honestly didn't attend the study, so I'm gonna stick with my original motion.
All right, so that's, uh, you're offering denying resolution? Support from Councilmember Toy, discussion? Anyone from the audience like to comment?
Madam President?
Uh, Vice President Barr?
Just dotting i's and crossing t's. I assume the petitioner was notified about this for both the study and the regular?
Uh,
okay.
Yeah, the petitioner was, yes, the, the petitioner is advised when things go on the study agenda and they were offered the opportunity to attend tonight with more information. And the.
And I'm trying to recall, just if, if we were to deny that, which I, I agree with what, with what's been said about this under the circumstances. Um, but I also feel badly if it's a petitioner that just isn't familiar with the process and, and, and despite our trying to notify or didn't know to be here. If we deny this tonight, are they able to, to repetition? Or, I'm just trying to remember how that works. I see, I see Madam Clerk nodding her head, but I, maybe through the, go ahead.
No, I, I believe that petitioners may re, repetition for any, any reason, um, but I'd be happy to be corrected or petition from, uh, Madam Parker or our city attorney. All right, so the petitioner may reapply.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, uh, Madam Parker, would you please take the vote on the denying resolution?
Just so I'm clear for everyone, then a yes vote is denying. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Donavick?
No.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the di, the denying resolution is approved, so the transfer is, uh, a waiver use approval. It's not exempt. All right, at this, uh, we go on with item number fifteen. And this request to approve the building of an ice rink within Dover Park is came, came to us from Lewis Media to construct a fifty foot by eighty foot ice rink with lights for use by the public. Counsel?
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Barr?
I'll offer a denying on this.
Counsel?
I'll second that.
Report from Councilmember Jolly, discussion?
Madam President?
Uh, Council, uh, Vice President Barr?
As we discussed at the study meeting, this is, uh, this is one where my heart wants to vote yes, but my head has to vote no. We talked about this at length at the study meetings for the reasons why. There's just, uh, too many liability risks for the city, um, on, on this one, even though I just, I can't commend the neighbors enough for the, the way they've come together on this with a really creative idea and, um, I, I just, it's, it's the type of engagement that we all love to see, so, um, I won't belabor it any further than that. We talked about it a lot at the study. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the council? Anyone from the audience who wishes to address this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on the denying resolution? And again, uh, uh, an aye or a yes vote is, uh, is supporting the denying resolution that's been offered.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and, uh, the, uh, the request is denied for all the, uh, the reasons that were discussed at the study meeting and, um, I believe though that we made connection with the, uh, Parks and Rec Commission and have asked them to, uh, look at this within their purview.
Madam President?
Uh, Councilmember Jolly?
I wanted to, uh, have a formal rec, recommendation that the Parks and Rec Commission look at this from the council. I'll make that motion at this time.
All right, so you're offering a motion to refer this to the Parks and Rec?
Well, not to refer this item specifically, but to refer the, the idea of creating an outdoor ice rink somewhere in the city in a manner in which the Parks and Rec can control it and ensure that it's, it meets the standards that we have for our parks facilities.
Support? Right, support from Councilmember Toy, discussion?
Madam President?
Oh, Vice President Barr?
I appreciate President Jolly offering this, uh, just as a point of information for those from the community or whatever. We, we have outdoor ice rinks in the city currently, so this would not be unprecedented for us and, uh, I, I do think it would be a good idea to explore that if there's interest in that neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anyone from the audience? All right, uh, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on Councilmember Jolly's resolution to ask the Parks and Rec Commission, the Parks, Parks and Recreation Commission to look at, uh, construction of outdoor ice rink and ice rink or ice rinks in the city?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and, uh, Councilmember Jolly's resolution, uh, is approved, is, uh, thank you. All right, so with that, we move on to new business, beginning with item number sixteen. This is an acceptance of grant easement from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Beta Properties LLC for a twenty foot wide public utility easement in connection with the storm sewer constructed at three two nine six nine Capitol Avenue in southwest quarter of section twenty-seven. And this is parcel ID number forty-six dash one oh seven dash ninety-nine dash zero zero one eight dash zero zero zero. So move. Is that Councilmember Toy?
It was, yes.
Support.
Support from Vice President Barr, any discussion? Anyone from the audience? Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote? On the grant of easement and.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Wait, ah, there you go, aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the, uh, acceptance of the grant of easement is approved by all seven members of the council. Number eighteen, item eighteen is also an acceptance of grant easement coming to us from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Hagerty Square LLC for public utility easement in connection with the sanitary sewer constructed at one nine seven hundred Hagerty Road in the west half of section six. And this is parcel ID number forty-six dash twenty-three dash ninety-nine dash zero zero five dash zero. Counsel? Councilmember McCullough?
I'll move for approval.
Support? Support from Councilmember Toy, any discussion? Any discussion from anyone in the audience? Mr. Layer?
Uh, I believe you skipped over item number seventeen, which was the one above it, for another grant of easement.
I'm saying, I'm on seventeen, oops.
I did. Um, I, since we're on eighteen, we'll go ahead and continue with eighteen and go back to seven.
Wait, wait, wait. Okay, let me catch up here in just a second. That was for eighteen. Now we have approving by McCullough, support by Toy.
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry, and thank you, Mr. Layer. This is the, again, the problem with my confusion when I see a whole sequence of acceptance of grant easements and I lost track of which one went wrong. Thank you very much. We'll let Mr. Zlinsik know that, uh, you did him proud. You did, you did the department proud tonight, calling out the city council president for screwing up the agenda. Um, all right, Madam Clerk? Would you please take the vote on item eighteen and then we will return to item seventeen?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the, uh, grant of easement is honestly accepted, uh, by the council. Now we will turn to item number seventeen. This too is an acceptance of grant of easement coming to us from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Hagerty Square LLC for a public utility easement in connection with the sanitary sewer constructed at one nine seven five zero Hagerty Road in the west half of section six. And this is parcel ID forty-six, number forty-six dash twenty-three dash ninety-nine dash zero 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 five dash zero zero four. Counsel?
So move, so move.
Second.
Move by Toy, support by Jolly, any discussion? All right, um, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on item seventeen?
In just a second, I'm sorry. I'm catching up here with civic clerks, so we had to go backwards. Okay. Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and, um, the grant of easement is approved by all seven members of the council. And now we go on to item nineteen, which also is an acceptance of grant of easement coming to us from the Department of Law secured without monetary consideration from Hagerty Square LLC for public utility easement in connection with the water main constructed at one nine seven zero zero Hagerty Road in the west half of section six. And this is parcel ID number forty-six dash twenty-three dash ninety-nine dash zero 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 five dash zero zero three. Counsel?
Support.
Support from Councilmember, I'm sorry, who offered? Are you offering? Support, okay, offered it, I'll support it. Okay. Uh, approving resolution offered by Donavick, supported by Toy, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on item nineteen?
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and, uh, it is, a grant of easement is also approved by all seven members of the council. That brings us to the end of our, of the agenda items. For this time, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone who did not have an opportunity to address the council during the first audience communication session, now is an opportunity to do so. Calling, uh, Councilmember Toy?
If, if, um, do we have anyone? I didn't want to interrupt anyone. I just.
I don't see anyone.
Oh, okay. If I may, Madam Chair, um, I'd like to, um, also, uh, Council, former Councilmember Brian Meakin, a much happy birthday. If I don't do that, he'll remind me and we certainly don't want the wrath of Meakin. Uh, so, um, I'm sure he's celebrating his thirty-ninth again, so we wish him many happy returns. Also, at this time, we have a lot of folks here and there that are in need of food. Um, they're in need of clothing for these months as we come through this awful virus. And I think that people should be in touch with our Community Resource Department as well as even our office in the council to find those organizations that can best help folks that are in need. A lot of times they don't want to step up, but we certainly want to remind them that there is help in this community and we're happy, we're a great community that helps folks. Um, one such place I was in, uh, just this evening at Farmington and Eight Mile, they're offering same-day, uh, tests for the virus if you stay in your car, Farmington Drugs. So while we have our hospitals and other places, other folks are stepping up since the virus has increased so much in our great state. So I just wanted to remind folks of that as a, celebrate the holiday season and those less fortunate that are out of work perhaps or are in need, we need to be cognizant of that. All of us have festivals and activities that are going on in our community and I applaud that. But I also think we gotta pause and take time for those in need. Um, and so that was what I wanted to share with you, Madam Chair and others. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Toy? And, uh, I don't see anyone else who'd like to address the council, so we will adjourn as of seven forty-nine. We will reconvene at eight PM for our study meeting and just reminding everybody to, uh, go on mute.
Madam President?
Aye.
Need to take a vote?
Yeah.
Motion to re, motion to adjourn?
Uh, I think.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
A little ahead of myself there. Do you have a motion?
Councilmember Jolly, Vice President Barr?
Can we safely show seven? That, I was so thrown off by ending a meeting at eight o'clock that I.
We can show seven.
All right, and we show seven, and now we will adjourn at seven forty-nine to reconvene at eight o'clock for the study meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Donavick.